Well, Melanie.
Hey, I'm signed in as Eva. I apologize.
Not a problem, of course.
She Zoomed last weekend with her class, and I guess that was our first Zoom meeting, so.
Hello.
Hello, Jason. How are you?
Good, Joe. How are you?
Doing well, thank you. Uh, I see Amanda. Rachel.
Hello.
Hello, how are you, Rachel? I don't see you, though. I see you.
I don't know.
I'm not getting video for you. That's.
I can get the video then. We might be okay.
And hello, Amanda.
Hello, hello.
How are you?
I'm just trying to figure this thing out.
You're doing fine. I see you. I hear you. Uh, can everybody else see and hear Amanda?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Perfect.
Well, then, you figured it out. Well done.
Wow, crazy.
Dan, are you able to hear us? There we go. I see you, Dan.
Okay.
How are you?
I'm well, thank you. And you guys?
Doing okay, thanks. Rachel, are you still able to hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I am seeing something that says your network bandwidth is low. That might be the reason we.
Yes. I don't have the unlimited internet.
Okay.
I would doubt the picture. The picture might not work because of that.
That's absolutely fine. As long as you can hear us and we can hear you, then we should be good. I've got Paul just joining, uh, Dick just joining, and Katie. I don't have video for any of them yet, but very soon. Hello, Katie. How are you?
Hello.
Hello. How are you, Dick?
How are you?
Doing well, thank you. We can't see you yet, but that might be set up. Hopefully, that'll come through soon. But we can hear you, and hopefully you can hear us, too.
I can hear you and I can see you.
Excellent. See if the camera. Is that Taryn?
Okay. Do you want to just say hi to Mr. Joe? And then you can go play. Say hi.
Hello, Janie.
Hello.
How are you?
Oh, yeah. He's not at the library.
No, I'm not at the library.
All of us.
Sadly, I am not at the library.
Right.
Alright, guys, let's go to the car game. Come on.
See if I can get the camera on.
Start. Wait, I've got Elizabeth joining us. I'm not seeing her yet.
I think that's her.
That should be everybody, or very nearly so, anyway.
Hi, Deborah's here, Joe.
Excellent. Hello, Deborah. How are you?
I'm good. I'm good. Thank you.
Well, folks, it's, it's, uh, it's probably not the best introduction to our new trustee. But, um, Deb Marion Katz is joining us here. She does have a cold and so is not going to be using the video feature, but she will be able to hear us and we will be able to hear her. Before we get started, Deb, would you like to introduce yourself a little bit?
Sure. Thank you, Joe. Um, thanks, folks. I'm really a walking commercial for, I'm not sure whether it's allergy or cough medicine commercials, so I will abstain from sharing you all the, the image in video. I'm very excited to be part of this great group. I, as some of you might know, was part of the library board many years ago when I first moved to Altamont. And as I'm approaching retirement, I found Joe's persistence to be sort of unavoidable in terms of the the need and the desire to really work with Joe and this board and the vision of the Altamont Library. I, I do come from a for-profit background. I, throughout my career, have been a, a project manager, program manager, and have worked with teams in various kinds of projects to deliver, you know, various results to organizations. So I think that I do bring some, some skills that will really help me to contribute in a strong way, and I'm, and I'm looking forward to that. So, thank you.
We're very, very happy to have you. Thank you for, for joining, Deb.
Thank you.
It is 6:03, so why don't we get started? Rachel, are you, or are you taking notes by any chance?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, good.
Just real quick, because it's recorded, even if something happens to Rachel, then the, the good news is that this will all be on your computer, Joe. Since this is your, since you're recording, and the fact that it'll probably be saved locally or in the cloud, so there will be, I could tell by the beeping red light in the upper left-hand corner that there will be a recording of this in case we miss anything.
That's right. So, thank you, Elizabeth. It is recording. We are recording this. Uh, we are recording it visually, and then the Governor's new executive order on open meetings law says that we need to also have a transcription made of this meeting, and so I will arrange to have that come. And I'll figure out that bit. Probably we will use to make up that transcription, and all of that will be posted on the library's website. So why don't we start here? I am, it's been a really long week and a half, been a long two weeks, it's been a long month. I would just sort of like to go around the horn and just see how everybody's doing. How are you? How's your health? How's your anxiety? How's your family? Is there anything that we can do? Either me or anybody else in the meeting can do to be at all helpful to you. So I'm just gonna go down by the list that I've got on my screen here. So we'll start with Amanda. How are you doing, Amanda?
Now, to say, anxiety's a little high. I'm high-risk. My husband's high-risk, and we have children that are essential workers in healthcare and, and grocery retail, so I'm lucky enough to be able to work from home, try to keep myself occupied with my 14-year-old, which is a whole nother battle of keeping him inside, missing his friends, and wanting to get outside, but I just keep telling him it's a whole new world we're living in right now, and it's only temporary. So, making do the best we can.
Okay. Thank you, Amanda. How about you, Dan?
All right. Um, yeah, just, um, spending a lot of time getting ready for the start of the semester, which begins on Monday after and a, a, an extended spring break for the students, so. So, that's, yep, that's what we're doing.
Are you on quarters, Dan?
I'm sorry, what?
Are you on quarters, or how are you?
No, 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 no. We're just gonna finish the last six weeks or so totally online, so labs and lecture are all going distance learning, so.
The same semester, just pivoted.
We're just, we're just gonna do something different for the rest of the semester.
I hear you.
Uh, how about Elizabeth? How are you doing?
Doing all right. Big excitement was getting the well-in back, but we got her out of Scotland before things really went haywire. Got her back last week on Monday, and now we're in the recommended quarant-, about halfway through the recommended quarantine period after bringing someone back from overseas. Um, nothing too exciting. I've got like some kind of no fever kind of, you know, tiredness, but that could just kind of be from the fact that I have three teenagers now under one roof. Other than that, just doing the, the same thing Dan was talking about, dealing with the, for me, I mean, I was teaching online anyway this semester, so it wasn't a big deal, but the, but everyone else coming online is just causing a lot of stress for faculty and, and students, so, but, but, but all, all considered, especially given the stories I'm hearing coming out of the local nonprofit sector, I'm doing, I'm doing pretty well. Thank you for asking, Joe.
Uh, Jason, how you doing?
Doing pretty good. Just kind of taking it day by day and, you know, spending time with my younger daughter, kind of becoming the teacher now to her to help her with all her online classes that she has to. She's in fourth grade, so kind of using Google Classroom on a regular basis and all the joys of that.
That's, that's great. Somehow I've, we've managed to, well, we'll, we'll get there. We'll get there. We'll be, we'll get the work done. Uh, Katie, how are you doing?
Uh, health-wise, we're great. Um, we're just having the same as a teacher in my specialties in primary kindergarten first and second. Uh, we just had a big meeting about how to transition all that onto online learning, so, um, that's not really fun. I don't think it's what's best for kids, but what are you gonna do? Uh, and just balancing working at home, little kids at home, um, it's really hard, so, but we're good. We're healthy. And there's benefits of this, like we are having more family dinners together than we've ever had and playing. But the, the moving to online, the amount of Zoom meetings I've had at for work this week have been crazy, so.
It is, it is amazing. Uh, you know, it's, it's really actually not all that hard for parents of young children to find a little bit of a silver lining.
No, no. Then you have the guilt of putting it on parents now, like, oh, here's all these things that are really hard to teach a kindergartner in a computer, but now the expectation is for us to do that, so.
Melanie, how you doing?
Uh, we're doing pretty good. We're hanging in there. Um, I, I definitely, I'm home with the, the three kids, and, and Katie have been amazed at how teachers have really stepped up, and it's just been a great experience, I mean, relatively, so far. They, uh, especially, I know it's probably a lot easier with the middle school teachers, but they have, they have sent home and done so much stuff, which is so nice for a parent to be able to say, this is what your teacher thinks you should do, even if it is something you have to guide them with. So, it, yeah, it's been amazing to watch that, and, um, so we're hanging in there. You know, Todd's still working. They're reducing schedules next week, but we'll get to have him home then, I guess, a couple days, so.
Okay, good. Um, who else? Rachel, Rachel, how are you doing?
Hey, I'm doing all right. I have a one-and-a-half-year-old, so we trained him with sticks and things, so I actually am luckiest of us all, I probably, because John was already and, and I could always do my job at, at home. I would work remotely every once in a while, anyway, so, uh, for us, I just get to see him more, so, um, it's actually, thank goodness, it's working out very well for us, so.
Dick, how are you doing? Dick, are you able to hear us?
I think it's, mic is off.
Microphone is off. Yeah, that's right. That's right.
He has the line by it.
Okay, all right. Um, there's nothing that we can do from.
He's gotta hit unmute on the bottom left if he wants to talk.
Right. So, Dick, if you, uh, if you hit the, the microphone button, uh, or a button that says mute or unmute, then, then you'll be able to speak and we'll be able to hear you. Meantime, uh, let me see. Um, who have we missed? Have we missed anybody?
Uh, Paul.
Paul, Paul, of course. Yes, Paul just joined us. How are you doing, Paul?
Good, good.
Good. Um, not able to see you, but, uh, but as long as you can hear us and we can hear you.
Yeah.
I did do a test run of this earlier today. Uh, and we, that worked with video earlier, but, um, you know, it is what it is. Okay.
Well, just a quick note for even myself who, who have, I, I see a lot of people on the screen. Almost everyone is frozen, so please, no one do any important hand gestures or signs, um, because I'm, that, I don't think it's gonna be communicated to everyone equally.
Okay, thank you. All right.
I think I put the video. Can you hear me?
There he is. There we go. How are you, Dick?
Okay, well, Ellen and I are doing real good. Luckily, we have some really good friends that are doing shopping for us. And, uh, I have, I've had, I had a medical issue, but I'm dealing with that, and, uh, just, I'm so glad we got on here. That's a miracle.
You, you. You picked the right time, about five weeks ago to have it, so, uh, and I'm, having seen you since then, you, you were well on the road to recovery two weeks ago, the last time I saw you, so. So that's, that's, that's all very good news.
Doing good.
All right, uh, so, uh, let's, let's get down to business. The, I sent around a, a very brief agenda, um, yesterday, including in one of the emails, and there I can see Paul now. And, uh, there were just a couple of things that I wanted to talk through to you. We were not able to meet, obviously, for our scheduled board meeting, but there were a few things that we decided, including, of course, notably, to close, and we chose to close on a basis that at the time we said was until further notice. At the time that we did that, um, I sort of had in my head that, you know, maybe two weeks would be what it was going to be. That's what we were all talking about at the time, at least amongst the directors of the libraries. We were all sort of talking about the end of March or two weeks or something like that. But ultimately now, that is out of our hands. That is not a decision that I get to make or we get to make at this point. The duration of our closure is going to be dictated by the Governor's executive orders on, uh, keeping businesses, non-essential businesses closed.
And just to clarify, Joe, we are considered a non-essential business.
We are absolutely considered a non-essential business, yes. Which, you know, we, we may not, may not feel like that when, uh, when we're at work, and, uh, but that's, that's how we're being considered, and that, that ultimately is the right nation for us. We do pose a risk to health by taking and receiving and distributing and passing around and circulating, um, things. That's our business model, and, um, in a crisis where infectious disease can be passed around by circulating things, that is the, that's, we, we really do need to be closed, and so, um, we do not know, um, we have no information on when this might end. And, uh, it's, it's looking like it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a while. So, you know, we're, you know, maybe it's two months. Maybe it's longer. We just don't know. I don't know, just sort of by a show of hands, maybe we can do, or if we don't see on the screen, say yes. Do people watch the Governor's daily press briefings? Have people been watching those?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Sometimes.
Good. I, I'm, I, I think that it's a, it's an important source of information. Mostly the information that's been coming out of those has been, um, has been, uh, you know, it, because it's coming from as close to the sources as, as it can come, uh, I, I've, I've gotten a lot out of watching those every day, and if you're not watching them, I would, I would certainly.
There's a little bit of comic relief, too, when he and his brother really get going.
Yep, sure. The, um, it was very interesting today because, uh, at the beginning of the week, he was still talking about 45 days as being the likely apex of the, of the, of the pandemic, where most people were, um, going to be, uh, seeking hospitalization. This morning, the news was somewhat different, and, uh, maybe positive, maybe, maybe not, but, uh, one of the things that he said was that, now the models are showing that the apex is going to be sooner, 21 days, uh, is what he said today. Partially, the reason for that is that, um, the quarantining, that the self-quarantine that people have been doing over the past week and a half, two weeks, seems to be working. And so they, uh, the, the outbreak has gone from doubling, hospitalizations doubling every day to every three days to today, today's rate of doubling was every four and a half days. That's a good thing. That's the definition of bending the curve. So that doesn't mean that fewer people are going to be exposed ever. That means that people are going to be exposed over a longer period, and hopefully that will not overwhelm, uh, the healthcare system that we have. But this is all to say that we just don't know, and the facts on the ground are changing all the time, so there's nothing that we can say with any certainty about when we're going to be able to resume business as normal, or when we're going to be able to ramp up, begin ramping up the business as normal by reinstating, for example, curbside service or home delivery. We don't know when that's gonna be safe. Obviously, I will keep you informed, and please keep me informed as you hear things. And, uh, that will be, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll obviously have a, have a big party the first day that we're able to throw open our doors, and, um, well, maybe we won't have a party.
That's easy.
It's probably a good idea.
Baby steps, baby steps.
That's right, that's right. Um, it will be, uh, it will be a, an internal party. Good. Uh, I've been speaking with the staff, um, just about, um, most staff members I check in with a couple of times a week, either by text or by phone or by email, with one exception, I haven't always been able to get ahold of Albert Rush, and so I've only been able to check in with him once over the past week and a half. I do send out general emails to the staff. We've done maybe two of those. There really hasn't been much to report to them. But, uh, separate from that, I also check in with folks individually. Everybody is well. Everybody is healthy. Everybody is still at home where they need to be. Um, everybody is relatively secure in terms of, um, you know, their, everybody is, is relatively secure and relatively comfortable, as far as I can tell. So that's the good news on the staff side. We have been doing, um, video storytimes. I don't know if people have seen those, as we've posted those to YouTube, but we've had five staff members participate in those so far, filming clips of them reading a story or singing a song or doing bubbles or washing their hands or something like that, and we've been editing those together into a composite storytime. And the plan is to continue putting those out every Tuesday and Friday on Facebook. So that's been one way that the staff has been able to continue working. Um, we also are compiling a list that I've been pushing out, webinars to some staff members that they're able to, um, engage with online and so keep up their professional development. Uh, Upper Hudson has been very helpful with that. They put these things out all the time, and when I see something that is of interest to a particular staff member, I send those out. So that's another thing that we've been doing.
Real quick interjection, Joe. Um, something I haven't seen on Facebook that I've had, um, a, a couple kind of roundabout requests for is if we have something that walks someone through how to access the digital materials. Um, I know a lot of the webinars kind of take that kind of tone where they're kind of, there's the voiceover, and then there's the walking you through different screenshots and that kind of thing, but, but if any of the staff, people primed, um, after doing these webinars to, to maybe kind of take that approach for individuals that say might be accustomed to using Facebook, like my grandmother knows how to access Facebook, but really doesn't know how to check out, how to do much of anything else other than access Facebook, um, kind of a, a tutorial on how to use some of the online parts of the library that they might not be used to using would be, uh, maybe a project under date.
Thank you. That's a good idea.
Also, I don't know, have you, um, kind of asked Peter Rebbott to put up on the Altamont Elementary Facebook about your storytimes? I may have missed it, but I didn't see anything on there about it.
No, I, I haven't, and I hadn't thought about that, but I will reach out to Peter. I know that he's aware because he's, he's, he's liked or engaged with some of those, but I will, I will ask him to, to.
I'm sure lots of parents are just, you know, that will help, especially the younger ones.
Great idea. Thank you very, very much, Emily.
I would also, Joe, reach out to the Gilderlin superintendent, um, because I know that in the most recent communication that she sent out to Gilderlin parents, she mentioned that the Gilderlin Library, um, that you could access Wi-Fi from the parking lot, but there wasn't a mention of the Altamont Library, where we do the same. Um, so if you want to reach out and, and mention our Wi-Fi capabilities, especially with the foresight you had to, to buy a booster, then that can make it into the next communication in case there are any families in Altamont that are struggling with internet access.
I would imagine that there's quite a lot of them, and I would probably also, uh, put that notification up to the, the Knox, uh, the Burn Knox Westerlow Central School District, because that's even more of an issue as we get up the hill.
Yes.
If you got to get, yeah, I, I hadn't heard about that. Uh, if anybody could, uh, send along to me, um, what they're getting from GCSD. I, I, I thought I'd been on various mailing lists, and I have gotten things in the past, but I haven't been getting anything fairly, anything recently, so if.
I am forwarding it to you now, Joe, at least on the Gilderlin side.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, is there anything else that anybody can think of that we ought to be doing, that you'd like to see us doing in terms of our, um, social media channels? Or anything else that we can be doing for the community? Good.
I just wanna say about the programming you've had so far.
Oh, sorry, Elizabeth. I'm gonna, Dick?
Joe, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Dick, yes. I can hear you, Dick, yes.
Okay, are you going to plan to do this again often or every week or whatever?
Are we going to have this meeting every week? That's a good question and we can certainly talk about that. It probably would not be a bad idea to check in with each other. I don't, that I think I can leave up to the board leadership. I'm happy to coordinate these things. I just got a notification from Zoom that they've lifted the 40-minute unlimited on our meeting, which is very kind of them. We can keep going. Let's try to keep it at 40 minutes anyway. But that's very kind of them, or their algorithm. So maybe at the end of the meeting, we can talk about when next we'll meet again. Is that okay, Dick?
Yes, fine.
Okay, thank you. Good.
Now that I know how to do this.
Now that you know how to do this and everybody's doing it, yeah, thank you. So thank you for rolling with that. Okay. So let's see, what is the next thing? Right. Insofar as we are likely to, to still be, the quarantine is unlikely to be lifted by the first week in May. That's going to probably put a kibosh on the fundraiser that we have planned for every first Saturday in May, the annual book sale, from which we derive a great benefit. We have, in the past several years, taken in about $2,000 to $3,000 from that book sale. So we've got a couple of different options that we could look at. I haven't heard anything from the PTA about whether they're thinking about postponing that, doing it later in the year, possibly over the summer, or whether they're making any plans at all. Can anybody speak to that?
I can't, I cannot, but I can find out.
I feel like, so we as employees have still been told we're coming back April 1st. So I think we're just, I think everyone in the district's kind of waiting for the governor and, because we all kind of feel like it's very unlikely we're going back to school then. But they're treating school right now like we're not going to make any decisions past April 1st because that's, so I'm wondering if the PTA is kind of waiting for that too.
Well, I think there's only, there's one person that's pretty much in charge of it. And I can reach out to Jen and ask her. But I also know that they weren't putting, and I'll double check, I don't think applications were even going out until the middle of March. So I'm assuming that they never went out even unless, did you get any at the library yet?
Nope.
So I'm thinking that they, I don't even think she probably sent out even applications for people to do it. So I, I think it would be a really tough stretch at this point, but I will definitely check with her and can report back to you what she's thinking.
This is all to say thank you, Melanie. So there are a couple of different options that we could pursue. We could, if the PTA, if the Village White Garage Sale is put off entirely, or if it's canceled entirely for the year, then at some point, once the world is healthy again, we could go it alone. We could go it alone, asking for donations. We could go it alone, just getting rid of our own weeded materials. We do really depend on that, that opportunity to get rid of a lot of our weeded materials. We don't have the capacity to store them or really any way of getting rid of them. We can look into other options for divesting ourselves of our weeded books. But if we were not to do that, then we would quickly run into an overcrowding situation. It's, you know, it's not an insurmountable problem, but it is a problem both in terms of the organization of the library and also our budget. So I would just ask for, you know, the great minds that we've got here to keep that in mind and possibly acknowledging that it's okay. And just acknowledging that at some point, we may need to reopen the budget.
To speak to the budget real quick. And that is that I'm spending a lot of my day-to-day talking with different members of the nonprofit sector here in Albany. And so are, given the amount of money that we have in savings, which is somewhere between one and two years of operating funds, just kind of in savings. Many of the other organizations in our community are issuing furloughs, are shutting down. It's, I definitely think that of the many nonprofits that I'm dealing with, that we are actually probably the most financially well-off. So I hear you, Joe, on the concerns about overcrowding because that's, that's an actual kind of tangible problem. But I really don't think that anyone here should be worried about our budget because it's two to three grand is like, sounds like a lot. But in terms of the actual money that we have, I can't imagine much more of a rainy day than kind of what the world is going through right now. So this is, so my professional opinion is that we should not be worrying about filling in the loss of the garage sale. So don't, if you are angsty over that, please don't.
Hey, Joe.
One of many, many, many things that I'm angsty over. Yes.
In terms of the space for the books, maybe next year's gala, we could put like a bag of books under everybody's chair.
Can you get a book? You know, one of the difficulties that we've encountered recently is that there's less of a market for recycled paper. And, you know, nobody wants to see books thrown out anyway. So it's, you know, it's always just kind of a dicey thing, what we do with the materials that come out of, out of the collection. Again, it's not an insurmountable problem. And thank you, Elizabeth, for reassurance on the budget. On that note, I would like to sort of recall to everybody's minds what we sometimes talk about when we talk about library sustainability. And when we've talked about that, we always talk about it in terms of the three pillars of library sustainability. We talk about the environmental sustainability of the organization and how we want to make sure that we're good environmental stewards. But we also talk about the resiliency of the organization from a catastrophe. And the third pillar is the ability of the organization to respond to crises in our community. Those second and third pillars, which are not necessarily the first things that we talk about or think about when we think about sustainability, are really being tested here. And that's why I'm glad that we've been sort of talking about that and thinking about those things in our discussions about sustainability.
So I mean, and it's for us, it's not just that we have a lot of money in the CDs and in savings. It's also that we've already have our, we had our big gala before all of this hit. So the gala season really, we're ahead of the main gala season in Albany. So, so most of our really big fundraisers aren't, haven't been, haven't been impacted. So we're, we're in a relatively good spot compared to a lot of other community organizations.
It also turns out to be the case, even if we were to do away with the chicken barbecue and the, and the book sale entirely, that we may well still come up ahead of the game because of how well we did, how much better that we did than what we had anticipated in our budget on the gala. So that's, that's nothing to sneeze at. We, you know, so thank you all again for all of your help on the gala. Okay. The third thing that I wanted to talk about is just reallocating some resources within the budget. This might be something that we take a quick vote on. I don't know if it's something that anybody feels like we need to, but I did want to run it by people before I started, before we started spending this money. I've already asked Upper Hudson to spend down the rest of our allocated digital materials budget for the year to meet the increased need that we've been seeing for digital materials, given the inability of patrons to access their physical locations. That being the case, there's going to be more need, I would anticipate. I ran some numbers earlier today for not only our library, but for, for other libraries in the system, Vassilton, Albany Public and Gilderland, the three others. And we're all experiencing, we're thinking about a 25 and a half percent increase, that we're 25 and a half percent over where we were this time last year on our digital circulation, which is not outside of the, you know, the realm of our experience, but it is on the high end of that. Other libraries are showing somewhere in the 30%, 35% increase month over month. So I would like to have us think about moving some resources from our physical materials budget into our digital materials budget. I'd like to take $1,000, which, what I was initially thinking about was taking 10% from adult materials, children's materials, YA and audiovisual materials. Felicitously, that came out to exactly $1,010. So it's 300 from adults, 45, 450 from children's, $60 from YA and 200 from AV materials. So shifting that $1,000 into our digital materials budget so that we're able to participate more fully in the response to, to the increased, to meeting the increased need for digital materials. Everybody okay with that?
No.
Now, Joe, is that in addition to, I know we had discussed about not having the barbecue and reallocating the barbecue money towards digital?
It actually turns out to be a little bit more of a cloudy picture there. After we had that discussion, Amanda, I went back and I looked at those numbers and it turned out that the, the amount that we anticipated spending on the barbecue, we only anticipated realizing about $400 in revenue from the beginning. So it turned out not to be all that much. Of course, we can do it. We can, you know, if the board wants to, we can certainly take that $400 from the, what's that budget line, fundraisers other, and real, reallocate that to digital materials. That would be something else that we could do. But let's, but at this point, I think let's start here and then see where we are a month from now, see where the need is. And because of course, at the end of the day, we are going to reopen and we are going to need those, those physical materials. We are going to need books. We are going to need DVDs. They are going to have to recirculate. I hope that people get more used to accessing digital materials. I would be very happy to be able to, to have that as a more robust part of our circulation picture. But at the end of the day, physical materials are, you know, are coin and trade. So I don't want to take too much from there, but this is, I think, a good place to start. Does that sort of make sense?
No, it definitely makes sense. Do we need to vote on that $1,000?
Dan, do we need to?
Are you asking me?
I am asking you.
Why would you do such a thing? I, I, we're not changing the budget per se. We're just changing where things are. I'm not so sure we really need to vote on that.
There we go.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll leave it at that and I will move that, I won't, I won't ask Upper Hudson to spend it yet again. We'll just keep that in our pocket until and unless, you know, the need arises for that money to be spent on, on digital materials. We have had a 350% increase in spending on digital materials. So other libraries besides ourselves, obviously, trying to do what we can do to, you know, to meet these needs. Is there anything else that anybody would like to bring up? That we need to be thinking about?
Just that we appreciate everything that you're doing to stay, keep a presence on Facebook and to keep all this together.
Yep.
A couple of other things that I have been working on in the time that I've had to dedicate to these sorts of things. One major element of my work has been on the disaster plan. And we're pretty close to having something that everybody can take a look at there. We've been working with the, using a template that is provided by the Division of Library Development. There are some things that I don't, that are taking longer than other things. So making up a diagram of the library floor plan with, you know, references to where all of the, you know, smoke detectors and the fire extinguishers and circuit breakers and the pulse switches are. That's, that's been, it's amazing, the things that I had not anticipated spending all this time on are things that I'm glad to have the time to really dedicate to. Video editing turns out to be a real bear, especially at the speeds at which, the very slow speeds at which everything is being filmed and then uploaded and edited and then re-uploaded and then processed. And then it just takes forever to make those videos. But they're, you know, I think probably the most important way that we're staying in people's lives and in the lives of our young friends. I've gotten really great responses, emails from, from users. And on those, so I think that we're doing something right on those storytimes. And I appreciate the suggestion of boosting the signal on the, by getting in touch with Peter Rebont. I've also been working on the website. And this is something that has sort of, for a couple of years now, I've been thinking and saying that if I just had time to dedicate to this.
You shouldn't ask for those things.
Yeah, but, but it's coming along. It actually is coming along. It's coming along. You'll have something right now that we'll see on that. I was in at the library yesterday. It was just yesterday. Time has no meaning anymore, of course. So, but yes, yesterday I was in at the library to pick up bills and to just check on the building, make sure that everything was secure. It was the first time that I'd been in since the, since we closed. It was profoundly sad. I want to be back so bad. I know that you guys do too. But, but the building is fine. It's in good condition. It's in good shape. All of the systems, as far as I can tell, are working as they ought to. No weird smells, no weird stains, no weird leaks. But, but, you know, obviously I will keep my eye on the building. Now that it's been close to two weeks since we've been handling materials there, I think that we can, are getting close to being able to safely say that the materials are no longer, no longer have any of the lingering contagions. contagions that they might have picked up in circulation before we closed. I don't think that we're there yet, but we're getting closer to, to that.
Joe, on that note, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Do we have any plan in place for the materials that will be returned once we reopen, as far as them sitting in people's households? And I don't want to say like decontamination process, but like a little holding cell?
That's a really great question. Thank you for asking that, Amanda. That's something that we've been talking about amongst the directors in the system, and it's something that we've asked for guidance from Upper Hudson on best, the best practice for that. It's not something that, you know, it's a question that Upper Hudson isn't necessarily built to answer. It is, it has a, you know, a scientific element to it. What is the best way to decontaminate? If that's what the word is that we're using. Decontaminate those materials. I think that a holding cell is probably the right way to think about it. I think that the right way to go about reintegrating those materials into the collection and into circulation is to and this is just my opinion as I'm thinking about it now. Handling them, first of all, before we begin day to day operations, reopening the library for the return of materials, reopening the Dropbox, maybe only using the Dropbox, having staff come back in one at a time, emptying that Dropbox throughout the day. I think we're going to get a deluge of things all coming back at once. Handling those materials with gloves. Getting them checked in and then putting them in boxes and storing those boxes in the community room and letting them be quarantined for a couple of weeks before we get those back into circulation. That's, that's the best that I've come up with at this point. Again, I'm very happy to to get, I will be very happy to get guidance from Upper Hudson and from, you know, professionals on this when it comes time to reintegrating those, those resources. But it's a good question, and thank you for asking, and thank you for having that on your mind.
Absolutely.
We have extended the due dates on all of the library materials. Initially, we had everything moved up to April 1st. We've now moved that up to May 1st, and we will keep going beyond that if need be. I don't know what the number is of Altamont Free Library items that are out in the world right now. It's about 11% of our, so it's, I could do the math. 13% of the collection is out. So at some point, you know, we're going to have to start thinking about how those, how we, how we ask for those materials to come back. But we're not quite there yet.
Joe?
Yes, yeah, Dan.
Dick?
Oh, Dick.
Have you put any thought to, or maybe it's being done as far as the security of the building? Is that being checked on by a local authorities or what?
Both Altamont Police and Gilderland Police for the after hours have put it, have put the building on their regular patrol. As far as I understand, that means that they're coming by at least once a day, checking the doors, walking around the perimeter and just making sure that there's nothing untoward going on. That at least it was the conversation that I had with Chief Pucci. I had that conversation with him Monday, the 16th. I haven't checked back in with them to see whether that's something that they're doing. I don't know if it's something that anybody's seen. I don't know how their regular patrols have affected by the pandemic, hopefully not very much. But that's, that's what, that's, that's the security plan that we've got in place.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Joe, just one, one more thing. You know, as, as someone probably like many of us have, have, have pets, have dogs that we have been taking for a lot more walks since this has happened.
Sure.
My wife and I and our dogs were walking down the and this is only going under the category of if you really have more time on your hands. We're walking down the railroad tracks and Brandle Road toward Altamont. We hadn't done that in years. And you know what they have behind one of the buildings on the fairgrounds?
They have a caboose.
They have a caboose, Joe.
Power caboose?
That's not ours, but they have a caboose. And we looked at it, we said, oh, my gosh, they have a caboose. I'm just thinking for storage purposes, Joe, that's all.
Uh huh, uh huh, love it.
Okay, something to think about.
Is it, and it's on the tracks? It's on a
It's behind the building. Well, I didn't get close enough because there's a fence between me and the caboose, but there was a caboose.
You know what? Someday I will take that walk. I will take that one. I will check that out.
There you go. There you go. Just, just for future reference.
There anything else that anybody, anybody would like to add before the Okay. Well, thank you all very much. I'm glad that we were able to do this. I think everybody was able to participate. And that's very heartening for me. That may, lets me know that if we ever need to do this for a sort of more official meeting, that we'll be able to do it. So thank you very much, everybody. It was, I'm, I'm very, very happy to to see and hear from you all. That makes me very happy.
Thank you, Joe, very much.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
All right.
When we're meeting next?
Oh, gosh, that's right, yes. I will send around an email to, to organize the next one of these. Probably we will want to do this on our regular meeting schedule. So if there is no other reason to meet beforehand, then the third Monday in I guess. If there is a reason to meet before then, then we can certainly do that. And it seems like most of us have, have some time on our hands to be able to, to do this. At least we can figure out a time when most of us can do it.
And finance will probably run on the same schedule, Joe.
Okay, good. All right.
All right.
Well, thank you all.
Thank you.